Alright, so we have the submitted application from the applicant. Swift River Properties subdivision Red Barn Road Hill Road. Hard copies were received in the office. Within the 14 day, outside of that 14 day window, so it was in compliance with the ordinance. Hard copies were received as well as electronic copy. Those were distributed to the board. Members of the board in all forms, they're available here at the office if requested. So that is in the application to receive. So now is the time, we've got the application completion checklist. So this is now your formal application. So that's your town or subdivision ordinance. Application completion checklist, we're gonna wanna go through that. To make sure that all of that information isn't contained in the application that was submitted. And then also the performance standards checklist. We'll go through that as well, which then.
So are we looking to complete this tonight?
We are looking to.
That would be wonderful.
Well, no, it's not gonna happen like that. But the goal is to go through the preliminary plan review. Make sure that everything is in compliance, if it's not in compliance. We're gonna ask the applicant to either provide an explanation, maybe add a condition. Or covenant or whatnot. Or make an adjustment to the plan. So that it can then come back in the next step as prescribed by the ordinance to the final plan review. And the final plan review then requires your mailer and your paper copies, et cetera. So tonight we're really.
And the notice has been sent out to the butters?
Yes, I sent that myself.
Okay.
I think I see where there was some return things about from the butters. They were questioning the well and wasn't there?
I have not received any communication from the butters. The communication, well, so wait just a minute. So as a part of the preliminary plan review, we're gonna go through all of this to make sure that what's prescribed in the ordinance that's being needed in the application is actually here. Should be pretty standard. And then we get over into a subsection of that performance standards checklist. That's gonna be the technical aspect of this. Where we're gonna have discussion, the board's gonna have discussion with the applicant in terms of the design and things like that, suitability of subsurface wastewater. A lot of that should already be spelled out in the application, but if it's not, then we have the opportunity to ask question, ask for clarification, more specific information, et cetera, et cetera. So having said that, the only notice that goes to butters is a notice in this meeting. That gives them the opportunity to submit written comment, to participate electronically, or to attend here in person. For this step in the process, I've received no communication from the butters. And we do have two direct to butters tonight, but a present.
Did they ask for a waiver?
Don't believe that there was a waiver that was requested. There were no waivers submitted, rather.
Right, that's correct.
Thank you.
So because we have people that are participating remotely, I think it's best that if we do it out loud. Margaret, do you have the form?
I don't.
And Mike's in the car, so the first thing on the preliminary plan review is submitted at least 14 days before the regular meeting. Without objection, we'll record that as yes.
Yes.
The application fee has been paid, I have received it at the office, without objection, we'll mark that as yes.
Alright.
Notice sent by first class to butters by the town, I have sent that, without objection, we'll record that as yes.
Yes.
Waiver form, or waiver request form if applicable. I have found there to be none that are applicable as far as the application is, NA, without objection.
Okay.
Location map to scale showing subdivision and adjacent properties. That provided on the board up there, it was also folded up in your mailer.
Oh, okay.
Without objection, we'll record that as yes.
Yes.
Boundaries and designation of all shoreland zoning and other land use districts. Without objection, there are none, that's an NA.
Yeah.
Okay.
The outline of proposed subdivision in any remaining portion of the owner's property, if not included in the subdivision proposal. That is on the large site plan that was failed to, without objection, that would be a yes.
Okay.
Now general information provided in the application.
Yeah. Wait a minute. Can we take each section and have a vote on that? Would that?
Well, we need to go through line by line, because we're broadcasting remotely, it has to be outlined, just like a roll call.
Okay, but we, that was part of this section. And you said, you know, without objection, the answer is yes. But I would like to have a motion and a vote of the board.
So.
To accept this entire section is correct.
So at the next meeting, we're gonna have findings of fact that go through each of these. It says, yeah, and you're gonna have a formal vote on every one of these items, just like we did for the waste management application.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes, it, yes, it's applicable, and I'm gonna go through this application and mine that information real quick.
Okay. Sounds good.
General information provided included the name and address, if anybody has objection, just interrupt please. Name and address of the applicant, the applicant's agent is included. The right of, proof of right title or interest to the property is included.
It is.
All existing and proposed deed restrictions, right of ways and other encumbrances affecting the property, has anything changed since the application's been submitted?
No encumbrances have been changed, I do want to mention one change to the plan. Which will be updated come next meeting. This large parcel, the owner of Bucktail LLC.
Does that have a parcel number or not?
It doesn't, this is not a lot.
So it's a large portion reserved in the rear of the property?
Yep. So this lot was conveyed as of today to new owners. The Turners. The Turners also as an butter transfer purchased the land of what is lot one shown on this plan. So this, the remaining lots will be updated. The total acreage of the subdivision will be updated. And record owner will be updated for the following meeting.
Okay. But as presented, the answer to that is yes. Does the application contain the book page and the map and lot of the property?
Yeah.
Yes, the property owners and buying property owners. Yes, as current acreage of the proposed subdivision acreage of furor, acreage of any land not included in the subdivision. Yes. Subdivision planted a scale of not more than 100 feet to inch, including the name of the subdivision, which is Red Barn Road subdivision. Very unique, the number of lots. Yes, are contained, the north point in graphic scale, so this is all coming from your large, what's up there. Is included, the proposed outlines with dimensions. Survey of the perimeter of the track giving complete descriptive data by bearing and distances made and certified by registered land surveyor. Corner of the track shall be located on the ground and marked by permanent markers, plan includes the type of permanent marker proposed to be set or found at each lot corner, is that contained on the plan?
It is, yes.
Contour intervals specified.
Tent and contour intervals.
Thank you. Location of all wetlands regardless of size include forested and non-forested?
That's, that's on the plan.
Location of all rivers, transports, ponds within or adjacent to the subdivision.
There aren't any living in the subdivision, but adjacent, you can see turn number.
Thank you. Location of all slopes in excess of 20%? Number of acres within the subdivision, location of property lines, existing buildings, vegetative cover type, and other essential existing features.
That's included.
Location of any significant grain, sand, and gravel aquifers?
Not applicable.
Boundary of any flood hazard areas and 100 year flood elevation is depicted on the town's most recent firm map. All temporary permanent erosion features?
Yeah, there's a soil erosion note on the plan.
Do you have a written statement from the plumbing inspector regarding test pit bore and data in conformance with state law on this ordinance?
I do, that's exhibit seven of the packet that was handed out.
Thank you. Boundaries of the shoreline zoning districts?
Not relevant.
Location of boundaries of any significant wildlife habitat is defined by Department of Fish and Wildlife. Location of our structure, listed on National Reserve Register for Historic Places or any archaeological site identified with the State Historic Preservation Commission?
None.
And no, you do have a pending letter to them, correct?
I do, waiting on response, they say they'll respond within 30 days.
Okay. Location of all rare and endangered plants is identified by Department Conservation?
And none on the, there's none on the property.
Location of all wildlife habitat?
None.
Location of all scenic areas and rare natural areas.
None.
Location of all subsurface wastewater disposal system test pits or borings and test data and appropriate documentation.
That is on the plan and included in the submission packet.
Thank you. Location of all existing and proposed wells and appropriate documentation.
That is included in the packet.
All erosion control features proposed to the site.
Yep, that's on the plan.
All stormwater control features proposed to the site.
But, no.
None? On this, on the plan?
Well, no, no, it's just soil erosion.
All parcels of land proposed to be owned or held in common or joint ownership by subdivision or individual lot owners. All land proposed to be offered for public acceptance to the town.
None proposed.
Documentation showing adequate flooded water indoor sewers available to serve subdivision if municipal services are to be used.
There's a well driller statement included in the submission.
Road plan specifications, appropriate documentation is required by the North Rock Road Ordinance.
All, no.
Type and location of any proposed fire control features and appropriate documentation.
Here's a fire letter from.
Yeah.
Statement indicating how solid waste from the subdivision will be handled.
There's a note on the plan saying solid waste will be disposed at the expense of the individual private facility.
Documentation indicating that the applicant has the financial technical capacity to meet the requirement of the ordinance?
It's not applicable, but I do have a statement from my.
Thank you. Indication of how roads and other public improvements will be maintained until the improvements are dedicated to the town or for private roads and improvements, how they'll be maintained, how they will maintain them over their lifespan. No roads. Okay. That is the content of your application. Now onto the performance standards. Are there any questions from the board relevant to completeness of the application?
Not so.
None here.
So the first item.
Do you have any questions, Margaret?
No.
Okay.
A minimum of 20,000 square feet in, in North Rock Water District area, not relevant. Or 30,000 square feet outside of the district. With 100 feet of frontage, so each of your lots have a minimum of 30,000 square feet and 150 feet of frontage.
Correct.
Have you installed permanent monumentation?
Yes.
And no five of the 750 feet apart?
Um.
No. So they have to be, but no five of the 750 feet apart along road lines?
No. You can see where each pin is in relation to.
So they are not less than, but not more than 750 feet apart?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Can you read all corners and angle points of the subdivision boundaries? Or interior angles and subdivisions, 135 degrees or less?
Yes.
Permanent monumentation in all other subdivision boundary corners and angle points plus lot boundary corners and angle points?
What's the question?
You have permanent monumentation in all other subdivision boundary corners and angle points?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the rebar thing, right?
Yeah, two pins.
Do you have lot lines that are not 90 degrees of the road?
Um. They're very close if they are.
If they're not, then monuments shall be set back 100 feet from the road at each side.
I can look to see, I mean. Do the lot lines look to be at something basically less than 90 degrees to the board? It'd be perpendicular to the road, correct?
It will be squared to me.
Alright, sorry.
That's what we're asking, right? 90 degree angle?
It's gonna be 90 degrees or less.
No, if the lot lines are not 90 degrees to the road, the monument shall be set 100 feet from the road at each side.
That may be 90 to that one from lot five, I don't know, it's some curve to grow, I couldn't tell you like. Yeah. That's tough to tell, I could basically road front. Here's gonna be 90.
Yeah, to me too.
So the board's gonna classify that as yes?
Yeah.
Formalize all of this at the next meeting with the findings of fact.
Okay.
Individual well sided, instructed to prevent infiltration of subs- of surface water. You're actually citing these wells?
We're not, included in the well driller statement is their opinion on location of wells, that they didn't see anything that would cause a well to be drilled anywhere other than it not, it has to be at least 100 feet from a septic system, that notice on the plan.
Alright, so those. The, what, does a well driller also include water supply for the subdivision to each lot of adequate supply all the potable water and other water requirements of the development?
Yes, that is included, adequately.
Yeah.
Alright, so that is, is the next question, do adequate waters available to survive the subdivision? Not from the water district, relevant. Subdivision, it signs with fire and all other emergency vehicles have unrestricted access to all developed areas of the subdivision?
Letter from Nate Jones.
Outline and propose subdivision, and any remaining portion of the owner's property is not included in the subdivision proposal. Yeah. Evidence of site suitability and wastewater disposal system prepared by a licensed site evaluator complies to state rules.
Yes, included.
Test pit bore and location shown on subdivision plan and accompanied by an HAG 200 or other format showing the appropriate soils data.
Yep, that's included.
No bearings required?
No.
And there's no holding systems allowed?
The results of the test pit analysis, the holding system wouldn't be needed.
Okay. Well, we wouldn't issue a permit for a holding system anyway, but as long as that was in the condition of one of your lots.
Yeah.
We don't require a letter on the sewer. The site's developed to prevent a soil erosion from entering water bodies, wetland stormwater drainage features in adjacent land?
It's gonna be, sorry.
Sorry?
Yes, that is.
We're at performance standards checklist, three from the bottom. Uh, one of those isn't stable, the one which is two page.
Thank you.
We're going through this relatively formally, and then we'll formalize at the next meeting.
Okay.
All temporary and permanent erosion control measures to sign in accordance with main erosion sedimentation controlling book for construction DMTs.
Yeah.
I'm at the bottom, third from the bottom of the performance standard checklist.
Okay.
So you don't have any, just because you're something up in the land and you're not supposed to build, is that correct?
There's no proposed construction, so there's still a lot of, say this.
That was a part of the right of way, are you just planning that and now it's gonna be construction of a road to get to the back?
So the right of way is no longer gonna be private segmentation, probably that's contained to impact.
Okay.
So that will be off the plan.
Right, so you don't have any temporary or permanent erosion features?
The, none on site. On the note on the plan does give plans for future owners to build.
And there's no construction and development that's gonna happen, so that last line on performance standards checklist would be not applicable. Stormwater control plan. Limited peak discharges from the site's pre-development levels, two year, 10 year, 25 year frequency, 24 hours duration storm.
That's not applicable, it's no proposed construction.
Then the development proposed within a sand and gravel aquifer, designed and constructed according to a plan that takes into account the impact of development upon the aquifer, also not relevant.
Right, it's not located over a sand and gravel aquifer.
Now the planning board may require a plan developed by a hydrologist that shows the proposed development will not have an adverse impact upon the aquifer. What is the pleasure of the board?
There's no aquifer there. So if there's no aquifer there, this is, this is required, we need to have that in the first place.
Yeah.
Asking a question here.
I think it goes below.
Right? May require.
There's no aquifer, so why would you draw a plan up?
Nothing, if, if there is an aquifer, then it's not applicable.
Right.
So the groundwater that's there theoretically would come from an aquifer. Right, so would the aquifer, the groundwater is coming from. You can be on top of an aquifer, yes, and development could have that impact. There's also a chance that an aquifer in that area that's supplying the groundwater would then be overburdened by proposed development.
Multiple developments.
Right.
And a lot of other subdivision ordinances, when they ask, you know, is, should a hydrologist do a study or submit something, they say they will do that if the property is located over a sandal, sand and gravel aquifer. And one of the two, if the net residential dwelling unit is less than 120,000 square feet or 100,000 square feet. Or, I forget the other one. But, the, you know, there's 26 acres and six lots, so Brian Docking 400,000 square feet, so that's a threshold. This was brought up at our last meeting, that there was concern about wells.
Yeah.
By a person who lived in that room, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the well driller that provided the letter, so we had to see the water supply, mentioned this well. And, and the 60 gallon per minute pre-charge rate. I have some other information on that too, if you'd like to look at it, depth. Which is high.
Our several laws just have a 400 feet.
Right, it's like 150 to 400 feet.
I have a question in regards to the well company providing a letter, is it just the email that we have in our packet?
That's correct, yeah.
And, and, um. Yeah, it just the, the email, um. The, I mean, it looks like it's, it's a copy and paste from a correspondence with you. And that their letterhead was typed in. Is, is it not possible for the next stage to get something formalized with a signature from them?
I mean, I can do that.
And, so, so that's for exhibit 12. And, and exhibit 10, and I just need some quick clarification on exhibit 10 too. As, as you're well known in our area, the whole issue around wells is a, is a hot topic. And I like to formalize the correspondence for the planning board. That it, you know, having a signature and not just the emails that's in the packet. And exhibit 10, if I read that correctly, is that stating that we're still waiting, that it's in, in review process? And, and it's still, we're still waiting on something from them, from the state?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, alright.
I reached, I reached out to him a week before that follow-up email. And that's when I submitted the requirements.
Yeah.
The main state historic commission.
Yeah.
The website, they say that they take up to 30 days to respond.
Yeah.
Today is 30 days, I haven't received anything yet. But once I do, I'll include that, I'll bring that to the next meeting.
Okay. And we won't move forward to the next meeting until that documents, those documents come in, Richard?
Uh, so we will, based on maybe the need for other adjustments on the plan. If he doesn't have what we need for submissions in total, then it's just gonna be another one of these style meetings where it's, it's a workshop really, where we're telling them what we need, he's making those updates, and then it could, you know, it could be, not, hopefully not gonna be. You know, if it's an efficient process, it could be two meetings, this meeting and the next meeting. If he takes all of our feedback under consideration. But other than that, it could be that he makes some changes and we, you know, we're still not comfortable with this. And then it back to the drawing board for him in terms of making modifications to the proposal.
Yeah, yeah, I think, so we, we are considering this application as a preliminary application. And with the follow-up that we're talking about during this work session.
Yeah, so anything that comes up today, he's, he's gonna work on, you know, like your exhibit 10 from his score. We're not gonna, we're not gonna grant a subdivision, but the board isn't gonna grant a subdivision until we have that. You know, it's a condition that we're not gonna ask him to go through.
Yeah.
If we can't have that.
Thank you.
And then, you know, exhibit 12 on letter, that's not an unreasonable request. If we can get that, then that's gonna hold the process up.
And I just have some questions, and you can just let me know, Richard, when it's appropriate in regards to our application checklist. I just have some questions that maybe someone, you can educate me or somebody can educate me about it, because I question about the plant life and the wildlife and and there's, you know, there's nothing there or nothing, I mean, do we have anything stating that that is then, you know, because in driving that area, you have this wildlife and plant life that's there. I just wanna figure out if we have anything verifying that for the files.
I mean, that's, that information is shown on exhibit five. Matt provided, Main Department of Fish and Wildlife, other agencies.
Okay.
Beginning with habitat.
Okay.
I think the department has online resources for all that mapped information.
So can exhibit five, is that in your office, Richard? Because I, I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but I can't read those words.
Uh, it's not, we could request it to become deadger to us, but it's, it was also an electronic file, and I'm pretty sure that electronic file was 18 megs.
Okay, alright.
I think we could probably zoom in closer on that.
Okay.
I'll crop that out, I'll zoom in, crop out, screenshot it for everybody.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
So does the state essentially determine like, they would have someone that would say, there was some kind of. So does the state essentially determine like, they would have someone that would say, there was some kind of rare patch of plants in that area, and it would already have been marked on these maps, the state has identified at some point, okay, that's correct.
Yeah, it seems to me that, uh, when anything like that, the state notifies the town. Cause we had one out on, uh, Sandy River, it was, um, an eagle or something.
Right.
I think it's gone now, that was many years ago, but they sent it's a letter, sent to town a letter, saying it was there.
Yeah, I did some work on, uh, a place to put in a road and part of the runoff had some special something going into that pond or whatever. That made it unique, until you couldn't get anywhere near that thing.
And this includes any kind of, um, artifacts or, you know, um, native, any kind of, you know, that includes that going over that area?
That's your exhibit.
Okay.
Ten, they're gonna do that.
That's exhibit ten, is that what you said?
Exhibit ten, that pending, the pending recommendation from the state will, will cover that.
Oh, oh, okay.
Typically, don't they have that on map, like, you can go online and find those, I think a lot of the town plans have those maps for those little sites already.
Correct, yeah. But they'll.
Yeah. Yeah, I know some, uh, I, either it came to me, somebody that knew somebody that works for them and they were commissioned to come out to Nordwalk. And I'm like, why are you coming to Nordwalk? And they're like, we gotta go look at some land and, and not, and now this makes sense if it was this land that they're looking at, who knows?
No, last weekend, there were a couple archaeologists up there part around the old school.
Yeah.
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 I wondered why. Kerry, 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 Kerry took care of them.
Were those your only concerns on that so far, Margaret?
So far.
Okay, uh, so back to the development of a, uh, a plan by a hydrologist that shows proposed development will not have an adverse impact upon an aquifer. Does the board have a pleasure?
Since there's been questions by Anna Butter, maybe we should. How does anybody else feel about that?
I know, the, the biggest thing that I, I can only measure off of our own well. And, and since we've been up there, our well has run dry once. And we have. Uh, what is it, four houses up and down that road that are around us? So, I, and we're in the middle of a drought now and, you know, I just, I just worry about that. I worry about the wells and the, and including the population there, so. But, I mean, we, you know, we'll get something in writing from a court, you know, somebody who's commissioned. Um, is there anything else that we can do to validate, you know? Richard, other than what we're waiting on?
We have not requested.
Right, so, I, I, I mean, what, what's come from the well driller so far is a restriction on well locations. I don't think it deals with capacity, I think that if the well driller was willing to address that capacity. That that could satisfy that.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I would feel better, I, the only measurement I have is off our own well. And, you know, and, and for, and we're just two people on, on that many acres of land. And you ha, and you're like, you know, the occupancy of that small area is going to increase and it's, you know, I'm just concerned about that.
So I, I have a question, so I'm not sure with past practice here. Anytime we talk about that, how much of that is the landowner's responsibility, is they're gonna buy that piece of land? There's, there may not be water there for a while, do they need to know that beforehand, or did that sale occur to past practice?
We don't ever, the town doesn't involve themselves in transfer of property.
Okay. Okay.
So they have to put their own well in and own leach field in, right?
Right.
Correct.
And so the job of the planning board now is to get proper documentation that the ten lots would be able, so subdivision would be able to. Support the recommended well size and leach field size, right?
This is six, such as six lots. Not, not ten.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
And if I may, um, obviously, you know, water supply is, you know, people like to have water and their wells not run dry, understandably. The butter who brought up their, the condition of the well, they, they have a, an above ground pool. So I don't know, you know, if we're talking tens of thousands of gallons of water at a time. I can see that, but, um, you know, for residential use, I mean. So if you look at the total lots that you have for sale here, so one of the lots is gonna disappear as five ninety-four and back, correct? So you essentially have, that's gonna become one ninety-seven in a lot basically.
That's correct, yeah.
One, two, three, four. So six of them possibly be built on this house of lots.
But it was originally ten, right?
Um, in the preliminary sketch, yes, because the back lot, the big back lot, and then there was a piece that was broken off and sold to a butter open air turner broke on the right side. That's the longer part of it, and then you've got one on the far left towards Ward Hill that's not gonna be a part of it either.
Yeah, yeah. And, and who's to say that above pool wasn't, uh, filled with a, a tank of water?
Right.
Um, that they went to North Pond, filled up the tra, uh, trailer tanker and brought the water over, we don't know.
That's right.
Is Mike one of the dry or would you have to pop it off? My thought would be, is there anything that would lead us to that, to the, to, meaning, uh, that, that we would require a hydrologist to develop a plan? Meaning, is there anything adverse here, is there anything that's gonna say, boy, there may not be water, I just, I'm not, I don't see anything.
A well in the area that's already producing sixty gallons a minute.
I mean, so I know, I know you can go online and you can, any, any public web, you can go on and click and it'll tell you how deep and all that stuff. I just, I just don't know, is there anything here that's, that's leading us to say, boy, there may not be water, I don't, I just, I'm not, I'm just not seeing anything that.
Well.
All, all, all I want is something official rather than a Gmail account that's not signed off by an official. For both, both the state of Maine and by the well person, that's all I want. If we get something official, that is what we should have.
Who from the state of Maine would do a thing like that?
No, I'm just talking about exhibit, well, there, he, they just communicated that there, that it's under review and it's coming forward, the August twenty-third email.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm gathering the consensus of the board is that you would not require the hydrologist's plan if exhibit twelve can be formalized.
Right.
No.
Yeah, so if we could put that into a motion, please.
Okay, I will make a motion that we will not require a hydrologist's plan. As long as we get a real letter with a real signature from Temple Well Service Incorporated.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
You've got a roll call.
Oh, that's right. Margaret?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henry? Yeah. Okay. Now, the motion.
Motion has passed.
I have, I have a question, Richard, I'm sorry. Um. Does the town have the ability after this whole thing goes through, does the town have the ability to dictate? On this, um, lot size, how mu, how big a well is?
We don't even do permits for wells.
No. Not how big a well is, we wouldn't, but if they were to come in and propose a site land development for a structure, then, you know, it then is on the applicant at that point in time to, you know, they're gonna bring something from the fire department, that we have the capacity, uh, that we've got. Uh, you know, adequate water supply as well, so there could come a time when the lots were just devalued because there wasn't an ample water supply to support that. Um, but if he can provide evidence at present that there is ample water supply to support the lots, then.
So if, if I have a, if I have a twelve foot well and my neighbor next door has a, I, I have a hand dug well, you know, twelve feet down, and my neighbor next door has a, a drilled well. Does that drill well take away from water wells from like the abutting neighbors? Cause it's, it's deeper? I mean, that may be a stupid question, but.
I couldn't be entirely.
My instinct would be, yes, it's all, it's all water in the ground.
Yeah.
But it depends on the aquifers that you're tapping into and whatnot and the supply of that aquifer. Now typically, you're talking about the lot size and the draw off from that square footage and what you would talk about density.
Yeah, yes, yes, thank you, yeah. It just, it just seems like, you know, that if we don't have any regulations, you know, because it's their land and that's fine and it's a subdivision and, you know. But, um, but, you know, someone can come in or, you know, may be able to do a drill well and the abutting neighbors have a dug well, I don't know. But that drill well obviously will maximize on their abutting neighbors.
Um, drill well usually goes down, sets into the bedrock, you drill down below that, a dug well is on top of the bedrock.
Yes.
Right.
Which can be a different aquifer.
I did quite a bit of site work down in the Smithfield. And this drilled well is fifty feet from the lake. And they had to go over four hundred feet to hit water, okay? And all the wells along that road on, what is it, uh, what's the name of the pond in Smithfield?
North.
North Pond.
North Pond, the same way, three to four hundred feet and you're, the camp is on the lake.
You don't really know until you drill.
Right, right.
And someone could buy land and never plan to have a lot on property.
Yeah, for sure, I mean, like, that's what's happening with, uh, lot seven, right?
Right.
They're just buying the land.
But it's already been sold, lot seven?
Lot one.
Oh, lot one, okay.
Lot one?
Right, one.
Oh, it's lot one? Okay. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, so that. If there are no historic or archaeological sites, wildlife habitat. Scenic areas or rare natural areas, then there's no protection plan that's required, which then wipes out the rest of that page.
Okay.
Which means we're to the point of you folks looking at the application and asking any questions that you might have about the information that's been said. Or layout on the plan, if it's something that we need to see differently, uh, we should have a discussion about the covenants that are in the application, whether those are appropriate. I don't know if you might wanna guide through the covenants formally.
Sure.
In terms of what you're proposing.
Yeah, we can let it go. We're enforcing the covenant, sorry, the covenants can be enforced by other property owners of the settlement. If the town, I didn't think of this, if the town wants a note on the plan saying something like, uh. The town has the ability but are not obligated to enforce covenants, I can put that on, so it's just. You, you have no obligation to do so, but if it's something you feel like, you know, is affecting the town, then, then I would be okay with putting that on.
You, you see more municipalities than we do. You, is that a customary statement to?
It's, it's not, we kind of just thought of that the other day, um, because, well, people, I guess, may think that the town can enforce it and will enforce it.
Yeah, we've had calls from other people who bought lots in subdivisions.
Right.
Wanting the town to step in and do something, well, we don't do that, that's a critical matter.
Exactly, but we will not issue a permit based upon covenants, so we're not gonna ever issue a permit for mobile home, there's no mobile home also out in there.
Covenants in the book. Sorry, I'm looking at that. This, oh yes, they are, um, exhibit two, two. We'll start at the top. Mobile or manufactured homes shall not be permitted on any lots. Each lot shall be used for single-family residential or recreational purposes, commercial uses and activity are prohibited. However, business activities associated with in-home occupation, professional trade, farming, and the rental dwellings shall, dwelling singular shall be permitted. Number three, all structures erected on any lot shall be promptly and expeditiously completed to their exterior within eighteen months after construction is commenced. Number four, no unregistered mo, no unregistered vehicles, metal storage containers, no junk trash debris shall be allowed to remain on the premises. There shall be no clearing of woody vegetation within one hundred feet of the centerline of Red Barn Road, other than for the installation of driveway, utility lines, or setic systems. This area is, is to remain naturally vegetated and serve as a privacy buffer from the road. And number six, camper trailers, RVs, camper trailers and RVs shall only be permit, permitted on the premises May through November. This covenant shall not apply to camper trailer and RVs being stored on the premises in conjunction with a single-family residence.
How do we manage these covenants? Who's gonna go out there and tell these people that they can't have these?
So the town, as of now, if the plan was approved as of right, you know, today or next month, without any changes, the town wouldn't be able or liable to enforce those. Um, for me, since I will be selling the property, this will be disclosed. And so it, you know, it attracts people who have the same values. Um, today, I actually got a call from someone who saw the notice of this meeting and mentioned that they like the covenants, they're, you know, older, they're retired, they're looking to downsize. And wanna buy, you know, a piece of land to build somewhere where they, you know, have a sense of security that the neighborhood isn't gonna go, you know, in the direction that, that they're not wanting. So it kind of just provides a little security for buyers who futurey know.
Is it just fluff?
It's what?
Is it just fluff? I mean, you know, it's, it, it, I mean, it, because it's just words on a paper that can't, you know, because. I'm gonna, I, I could be the retiree that wants to downsize and build my single-family home there. And, and the, the next door neighbor is gonna put a trailer on it, but who's gonna tell that next door neighbor that they can't, they gotta move their trailer off of there? Who's gonna, who's gonna do that?
I think the, the, the permit, the permitting process would prevent that one right there, that, uh, so the town's permitting process, if I get this right, would, would prevent. The, the manufactured home or the trailer there.
These are listed on the, by the chair.
The other, the other stuff is civil.
Yeah.
It's all civil. It's not outside the jurisdiction of the town.
Okay.
It's between the property owners, property owner fight basically comes out from, goes court.
So all these houses have to stick though? You can't put a modular in there then?
You can put a modular. It's a stick building home, just in pieces. So modulators are within the covenants.
Yeah.
Okay. If someone lays a foundation, puts a modular on property.
Yep, gotcha.
So I guess the only, so number 5 for me, I think, again, so like everyone says, you know, these are only going to be enforced when, you know, somebody takes them to court. So whether they're going to be enforced, no one knows. But to say you can't take any woody vegetation within 100 feet. You know, what if a tree is leaning? What if, there's too many what ifs? And I just think that that's, that's overreaching what it is. Everything else is, that makes total sense. Telling somebody that they can't cut a tree down within 100 feet of the centerline of the road is, I just, I, I can't in a good conscience say that's a, that's a good thing.
Why, why is that covenant in there?
Well, I guess the idea is just so someone can clear the road.
Clear cut?
Right, in front, I don't know, you know, the, the way that the land looks right now, you drive through, it's wooded, looks nice. This would at least discourage anyone from cutting that and changing the nature of the road. So.
We talked about this at, what was it, July meeting? And, and how that conversation came up and changing the makeup of that road. Because at that time it was 10 subdivision, you know, places and so, I mean, I think, I think, you know, I think Mike, you know, if, if it's leaning and it's a safety hazard, I don't think anybody's going to say anything about cutting down something that has fallen. But they can add words if something has become disabled, you know, is falling and to take it, take it out, you know?
I was going to say, could you add an exception to that covenant that, you know, if the tree is falling or is dead or, you know, whatever.
I'm okay with, I mean, you know, you guys are all residents here and, you know, may hold a little bit more stake than I do. I'd be happy to strike back from the covenants if you feel that that's a little too much. Don't take it back.
My other thought too is, is one of the things that you're seeing a lot now in construction is like pass a solar design, solar giant, you know?
Great point.
If you're going to ask people leave all that road wooded like that, I mean, you take out a lot of construction options for people who are trying to make these energy efficient homes where it's solar, you know, especially with that south facing, right? I mean, that, this is south facing. I don't know what it looks like across the road, whether it's five man or whatever company.
That's a great point. Yeah, so I haven't doubted that, so that's.
That would, I guess that would be, that would be one thing to think of as a person, like, I just know if it was me, being a resident of rural America, rural American, tend to kind of take the approach of like, if I buy a chunk of land and I want to make a passive solar house and cut more of these trees, I don't want a person next door, you know, saying, you know, worrying about the life of my lawn or something like that. That tends, that tends to be something that is kind of frowned on in this part of town. I just, I mean, I don't want to speak off.
Some people like growing lawns.
That's right. You know, I think something like that, that can be pretty restrictive for people who, you know, in the rural part of the world kind of don't mind, you know, if I got to cut some trees, you got to cut some trees, you know, but I wouldn't open up and make it look the way that I want. So I think, and may also be restricted for you itself, you know, in the first place. So, but that's just me. So.
Thank you.
Isn't there power warning briefs in there?
There are up to Todd Stewart's lot or.
With power lines, you're pretty restricted on how close with power lines you're going to go. If you're willing, what are they, 25 feet or some, something like that? Which is a, from laying an affair of a road.
So you've heard comments and statements tonight? Everybody's fine with whatever direction you choose. If you just want to follow up with that specifically at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. But we're not taking any formal action on this right now.
No, I think you started with concerns of the board. I don't think it's going to be a break on either side.
Right.
But I think there's something either creating an exception or hazard or just remove it altogether.
Right.
Yeah, of course.
While we're waiting on comment from the board, does the public have anything specifically that they like to grasp or comments they'd like to make?
I don't care about the trees, back the houses up 100 feet.
Zach turns the house back.
So that is kind of the reasoning for that covenant is because
Yeah.
can remain within 100 feet.
That's right.
Even these. So.
This is in order to have the setback longer.
That's right.
Do you include that in the house? If you don't grow, bring this.
Cut all the trees you want. What is the setback?
There is a one.
I know.
Really?
We have one.
No, we don't have a setback, but we would maintain probably three rod.
Yeah.
You would maintain what, Richard?
We would maintain three rod from, you know, the width of the road. It's not going to get you back 100 feet, that's for sure.
All right.
Yeah.
So could you, if we did a compromise with this, you know, because you just reminded me about that conversation earlier this summer. Could part of the building permit, could we come up with? I guess we, I guess we can't because if we don't have it in any other place, we can't put a regulation on how far these houses are.
Right. It would have to be part of an ordinance.
Yeah. So I, I think, I, I think that was the, that was a compromise in that last discussion is that, is keep the trees. So it doesn't change, you know, to keep the houses further back.
Well, that's up to you, I think. If you want to put, you know, an exception in there for dead or dying or damaged trees. But you're trying to sell these, so I don't know how anybody would react to that if they were looking at it to buy. But that's not here and there.
I'm just curious, in terms of kind of reading from the setback, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Over here, you said 100 feet back from the road?
Right. From the sunny line of the road, from the centerline.
Three rod road.
Right, so it'd be 75 feet on average.
I thought it was 33 feet.
A three rod road is 50 feet.
41 feet.
Yeah.
Around that.
So we want to leave that up to Brian to decide how he wants to handle that and then we will go into it at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's an idea because it's the purpose of the covenant in the first place is to make sure that you have houses set for the, for the town's, not a couple of covenants where they say that, you know, we're going to enforce this, but we don't enforce it anywhere else.
Right, yeah. Well, we're not going to enforce any of it.
Well, no.
Except, no.
Unless you want to have a building.
But if there's a covenant in the deed and they give us the plot plan of the lot for the layout of the house, they're going to have to have it back if that's what calls for it. You know, if, if it says you can't clear within 100 feet of the road, centerline, then how are you going to put your house here? That's the question in the coach office.
Right.
If, you know, I, if someone's, you know, breaking a rule like we were saying, cutting a tree and then I'm going to have to take you to court for my neighbor and I'm going to try to take you to court over a tree, that, you're right, that's kind of ridiculous.
Right.
But if you're building a house and you know that it's within that 100 feet, you build a house and I can take you to court and say you got to tear down your house. So people will respect some of these for sure, like that.
Right.
So, you know, I guess I hear that having a setback from the road for building is.
So, because here's a question. Can he include the covenants for these lots and these lots alone and sell? There has to be a setback. He can just say that.
Instead of the trees.
Instead of trees.
But whatever structure on the lots they like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with this, but setback covenant long before I did deal with trees.
That's.
So do we want to leave it up to him and then cope with it in the final?
No, no. I mean, yes, you do, but for the sake of expediency and process, I think if he's got one way or another that he can say tonight that he would be agreeable to, that, you know, that needs to be made public because we don't want to come to the next meeting and we're a final plan and have happy the deal right there.
Right.
So either we would leave the 100 in place with the trees or there's going to be a setback with the houses or maybe there's none.
I don't mind setback, that's all you can put in. I don't have to bother that.
Sorry, to put you on the spot, but I also don't want that to be a deal very quickly.
No, no, no. So if you were a buyer and, you know, we have a covenant on the plan saying that, you know, we can accept hazard and dead trees. The other way, I probably wouldn't show the building setback as a covenant, but I would show a buffer from the road. And so you're going to see this line across here that pretty much says you can't, it's a building setback. It's going to be lined and it's going to be labeled. So would you?
Through curious camp, right?
But all you need is to reference the plan that's on.
Right.
I think that's fine.
All right. So he's going to.
Does that satisfy? So it's going to be, I'll just show 75 foot from the edge of the right away. For residential dwellings. I would be up to awful ones.
I wouldn't vote on it right now. I just wanted to get it on the table so we didn't have to rehash it the next time and you're going to go back and get.
I'm going to strike covenant number 5.
Okay.
Okay.
So covenant number 5 is going to disappear. We're going to have a buffer line on the revised layout plan.
That's fine.
Mr. Andrew Trump. How we doing? We just listened to him?
It was interesting.
You have any concerns?
No, yeah, no. Except just for personal opinion, if my wife's going to buy one, she'll want as much sunshine on that piece of property as she possibly can. Every tree will come down.
That's a good point. It'd be 75 feet back.
Went in and cut trees on a person's property because they were allergic to maple trees. And so every maple tree on their property had to leave. I mean.
Why did they buy that property?
They bought the house. They bought the house and then, whatever, to say were allergic to maple trees. You know, I just did a welding project for somebody that's moving up from New Jersey. I mean, trees are different.
Yeah, so the conversation is interesting. But our. And if anyone has questions, concerns, need for clarification from the board with regards to the red bond or subpositions. This is really a last chance, well, not really a last chance opportunity, but in good faith with all the concerns that he's put in front of us, provide that feedback to him because really the next step we will go is going to be the final plan review where this gentleman is not coming in here with my lives and things like that, that will then ultimately ask your signature to be filed with registry of deeds, shorting this up. It's not a end, but it's, you know, as a courtesy, ideally, we're getting all of our reservations on the table right now.
Richard, Richard, the checklist that we just filled out, you'll include that in the package for the next meeting?
Well, I'm actually going to spend a significant amount of time going through a finding of fact like we had done with the waste management application with the subdivision. And so I'm going to send that out in a draft form electronically and then I'll send it hard copy. And then those are the items that we'll review at the next meeting, line by line and vote on.
Okay, great. And, and, and so just to, just so I can understand, this application is this package here and they don't have to, the applicant doesn't have to fill out an actual, like the building application or anything like that, right?
The ordinance says that the planning board is responsible for providing an application
Right.
under the subdivision ordinance, which is why we didn't have one and we then made a pending application. So I just went to the ordinance and pulled everything out for a checklist. And then the applicant then just, you know, put this together, much like you see with a larger site land review.
Yeah.
To just provide all that information in there in the order that is requested in the ordinance.
So would we have the applicant after you complete the, the checklist and do some kind of acknowledgement of, of signing something?
Yeah, so the plan that you have, the draft plan that was all folded up in your packet.
Yeah.
He's going to revise that with what we've discussed tonight. He's going to make the adjustments with the abutters and whatnot, the ownership. And then he's going to come in and we're actually going to sign papers of that.
Okay.
And then it's going to get filed at the registry of deeds. And every deed that then comes from the subdivision will reference Somerset County Registry of Deeds book number, plan number, and then you'll be able to pull it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Such a quick question. And maybe this is just for my theories I'm learning too, but so as far as the well drilling letter, so I'm not sure, you know, how many wells, type of well drilling is done around in the area. So I don't know what it, what it, I guess I'm just talking, I don't know how it is, but it makes sense as this, it's somewhere around, there's burns and this. Widesheets and all, so like that. And again, not that, someone that's familiar with the area would think that.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Maybe they have, maybe these guys went in and did that here a hundred times and it's not what.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if that's more of a, I mean, who knows how old this language is and the subdivision ordinance is. But now all wells should be reported to the state, which then have them. And so I've been on there, that's exactly where this well, well drill went, looked at all them, gave his professional opinion on the recharge rate and that, see, so, you know.
So you get the data from there, okay, we guys have said.
Like any, like any other well driller right here would do the same.
Other than with a lot of experience. Rather than experiences.
I guess I know what it is.
That's case of wells.
No.
You go on there.
So I guess just to compound that in the discussion that we've had around that, maybe as a part of his letter, a history, a brief bio, like a well driller, estimated number of wells drilled, been doing this for X number of years, some sort of a qualification statement.
Sure.
Just, you know, we don't do subdivisions too often, but
Yeah.
Or we can include this research that he had to, that he did anyway in the state. I mean, that would explain a lot too.
Yeah. Great.
And I agree with you, Richard. The more information that's in that letter, the better, just because out of peace of mind with all the news around our wells in these areas. So. And I, I agree with you, Richard, the more information that's in that letter, the better, just because out of peace of mind with all the news around our wells in these areas, so.
If there's nothing else with regards to this, uh, we would require again at least fourteen days of advance notice.
Yes.
Uh, the next regular meeting of the planning board, my notes are on the screen, uh, is late in October.
It is.
Well, it's as late as it can get, right? So it's gonna be not till the fourteenth of October.
Yeah.
So that's gonna give you until the thirtieth of September, two weeks, to get that updated information, revision to your plan, if we're able to do that, and great, we can have it at a regular meeting.
Don't we have another applicant on the fourteenth?
Uh, well, yeah, we're gonna hit that in a minute.
Okay.
Uh, I honestly, I don't have a formal application.
Oh, alright.
Fees that are paid and I have nothing else, and we're, we're lacking a lot of information with regards to that application too, so. As an administrator, I, I appreciate folks that have things buttoned up.
Yeah.
And in order for us.
So, can we say, can we give a priority to this applicant for the fourteenth and then post, push the next applicant to the November meeting? I, I wouldn't wanna do both at the same time if we, if we can avoid it.
I don't see why not, or we could have a special meeting like we did for this one.
That's the pleasure of the board.
Okay. I would rather do the November meeting, but, you know, I don't wanna, you know, it's been a long day.
So we would final plan this at the next regular meeting, and then the next applicant would be on the November meeting.
That's my recommendation.
That's cool.
Yeah, I just appreciate that.
Yeah, I just think, I just, out of all, you know, we all work really hard and, and we wanna, I wanna be hyper focused about these meetings, and I think it's, it's a healthy conversation, and it's a good work session. And I think, you know, after so many, it's yada, 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 listen for my name.
All right.
Okay.
So I think we're good, you have the proposed revisions.
Yeah.
You're gonna get those to us fourteen days before a regular meeting, which would be September thirtieth, or November, right?
September thirtieth.
Thank you, uh, and then we'll get that back up to the board, we'll send the appropriate notices to all the butters, once again, at that meeting, that we've received the update, and it's on file at the office, and we can go from there. Thank you very much for putting, you guys are giving us all the revisions, and.
Thank you for your time.
My first subdivision, so I appreciate it.
That, Johnny, your person's over here. So.
Yeah. We still got minutes to do.
Um, it's, looks like there's any, this is a three hole business.
Can we use the minutes before we do that?
Nope, your property, so they didn't extend the line, they just didn't show it.
Yeah.
So your property.
Hey, Charlotte, Charlotte, I motion to approve the, uh, the.
Second.
No, third.
Okay, I'll look for it there.
So there's one here. All in favor?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
And me, yes.
Thanks again. Love it.
Um, all right, thank you.
Too old, isn't it? And old business was, you put out a. Questionnaire.
Yeah.
How is that?
Yeah, so the, uh, survey itself online had some pretty good traction in the first couple of weeks. Uh, we've also had tax payments, so those have generated a lot more responses in-house than we normally would have got, um, and I was just gonna pull it up right now. The vote of the board was to keep it open for ninety days, uh, or to get to that threshold, we, I believe we have hit the threshold.
Really? Wow.
Uh, for response rates, let me have a second. We've received one hundred and forty-seven responses so far.
Wow, and I haven't even got over there to do this.
And of that, only six people are not residents of Norwood, so you're getting a pretty good. As we stand today, eighty-five point seven percent like the sign board as it is downtown. Uh, fifty-seven percent oppose an ordinance to regulate the signs in terms of timing, location, colors, et cetera. Forty-two point nine percent are in favor of an ordinance, so you've got a fifteen point spread there, and then we have a lot of comments, um, so. Some people think that it's a, again, it's a historical small town, that you don't need them, uh, the West Front Street sign actually came up on several occasions, um. People liked it, that it was informative for them, um. Worry about the real problems, we did get a lot of those, like, why is this a priority, and so maybe the next time we do this, it's something that I better think about to lead this survey off with, why are we doing the survey?
Yeah.
I was looking to manage participation, uh, but I definitely got a half a dozen of those, uh, as well. So, you know, I'll roll all that up, but after the ninety days, so that'll be November, December, if we have meetings, we're gonna look at those results, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Will you post those results online, Richard?
Uh, yeah, I don't think it works really easy to be able to do it, so once I get to that ninety day threshold, I'll just make up a JPG or something and put that out there and thank people.
That, that's, that's great, thank you, that's informative.
Well, it's nice before you spend the energies on developing an ordinance.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Would you say forty small percent are against it?
Uh, are opposed to an order, uh, are in favor of developing an ordinance.
Right. Fifty-seven percent were against the ordinance, eighty-five percent like the sign.
Yeah, I already clipped it off, sorry.
It's good, it's good participation in that for in thirty days, that's.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
Yeah.
But thank, thank you to the internet and the taxpayers.
Yes, absolutely. Everybody. Is there any other old business? Nothing, okay.
Um. Other business, in that webinar last night, it talked about getting, uh, freedom of information certified for planning board members, this is a new law in the state of Maine. Which is a, like, an online thing, Richard, you probably have more.
Yes, uh, I'm aware of that, and you give me just one second, I know, Margaret, I sent you a packet. I'm pretty sure the board's in compliance with freedom of access.
Um, but I think we're, as board members, we're supposed to get, like, certified.
Training in it or a certification.
Yeah, so it's a, an actual training, so maybe your training has to qualify for that, but we also issued a, uh, frequently asked question booklet. That you sign off, that you've received, that you've read, that you had the opportunity to understand, um. John, I don't have to sign that, you're bringing the announcement for. So maybe that's the gap, I can get you another one, but that was issued at first meeting, I have to. I got.
Yeah, mine.
I don't, must have missed, you took home, do you need another one?
Yes.
Okay, I have mics, I have Charlotte's. Margaret, did I?
No, I have it in my freaking bag, so.
But I nailed it to you, right?
Yeah, for sure, I just got it last week, I'm sorry about that, I haven't done it.
Are you going to Thursday? That's the one.
Richard, can I, can I PDF it to you, or do you need my original signature?
No, you can PDF.
Alright, then I'll do that, I'll do that, I wasn't sure if you needed my original.
I wanted to see, and then at the very last minute, they said they would do it on Zoom.
Was it, was it how many last night?
It was, um, an MMA meeting.
It was a planning board, a board of appeals training, and it was supposed to be a self-portrait, so John signed up for it, and then they ended up canceling that and just going Zoom only at the last minute. So it was something that you could have theoretically signed on to, but we didn't have the advance on it.
Right.
The one in Jersey, what's that?
That's gonna be everything, it's, it's a total municipal legal update. So, you know, the past election, the leans and registrations and it might down a little bit.
Um, what's the one coming up in September, there's like several coming up, but it's all saying, saying one is.
I'm not sure, I'll look at the trainings and I'll forward those out again, I know MMA is going back to all in, uh, online. For the short term, and that makes it easier to attend sometimes.
Yeah. Zoom style training, or one you can kind of work your way through on your own, like?
I think it's like Zoom webinar, yeah.
But the one last night was three hours.
Yeah. Most classes are.
So.
And they're talking and talking and talking, and then you can only submit questions in on the question board. And, um, they address those questions now and then, but you, we're all muted and you're seeing the, the presentate, pres- the person presenting, and that's it. For three hours.
So I actually have my correction next week, it's cool.
You're multitasking as you're listening to this presentation, and the most helpful was the question boards, I copied and pasted the questions out and they dropped in, that was the most helpful thing to me. I went in and I copied and pasted all of the questions and their responses.
That's pretty smart, I wouldn't know how to do that.
I did it last year, and, and I, it was stabbing me in the eye, the whole thing.
Okay.
All right, um, calling, meeting adjourned.
Okay.
See you October fourteenth, thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.